Good evening. I'd like to welcome members to the 28th meeting of the Sturridge Planning Board. Our first item will be approval of amendments to the Fettering of the Town Meeting. At 6:31 PM, we'll have an ANR for 40 Shampoo Road from Gene Sullivan. After that, we'll have an ANR for 195 Chauvin Roads from Noble Energy. At 6:35 PM, we'll have a public hearing on proposed zoning amendments to the agricultural entertainment overlay district. Following that, we'll have a announcement and update in all of the businesses at the current. Does everyone have the opportunity to review the amendments from the planning board? Any discussions to comment?
Sure, I got one question. I think first, why did not I end that meeting? Is that true or am I mistaken?
No.
Okay, never mind then. Am I mistaken?
All right. So we have a motion to accept the amendments that have been submitted. So, is there a second? Any other discussion? All clear? All of them through. One second. Okay. Yes, we have the ANR for 40 Shampoo Road. Mary, do you have your question?
No, I'll take your question. Did you say Shampoo Road? I just had it backed on my report. So you want to plan for 40 this evening for 40 Shampoo Road, and this is the reconfiguration of land owned by Gene Sullivan. If you look at the GIS maps to try to orient yourself, you would be very confused, and that's because we found an error on our GIS map. So thanks for the survey, we'll go over the bracket. So parcel B is being parked in line up here on like 800 Main Street, and that would create a new parcel two which has frontage junction below. The remainder of that parcel actually has its frontage in Deerfield, so they are building a home in it will be fronting into the town of Deerfield. So the plan meets the requirements, so I recommend or endorse the plan as submitted.
Okay, does anyone have any questions to comment? If not, we have a motion to endorse the plan as submitted.
So?
Any other discussion? All clear? Okay, then we have the ANR on 195 Chauvin Roads from Noble Energy.
Yes, so the plan that you have for 40 for Noble Energy this evening encompasses the parcels of 195, 197, 201, and 201 in Chauvin Road. And the board was recalled during our public hearing process with the applicant, they intended to divide the parcel into, the four parcels into two. One containing the travel plaza, the gas station, reunion store, and the other the electric vehicle discovery center. And that's what this plan does, and they are creating the appropriate provisions for stormwater, until use, et cetera. So since the plan meets the requirements, I recommend or endorse the plan submitted.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? If not, we have a motion to endorse the ANR as submitted. A motion? Any other discussion? All clear? Very good. Thank you.
You guys just read, our next meeting dates are October 12th and October 26th. On October 12th, we have had a free removal on our farmland, and that's our full relocation. The poll will be ready later to accommodate some of the land from trail construction, and those trees are marched for the board and for the public to read. So if you want to go out to the site, you will see that they are in color marked, so you can move that. And we also have a new sign for Ocean State Chauvin, that will be coming before the board when we come up. And then our next meeting is October 26th, and the special town meeting has been scheduled for October 28th.
Very good. Okay. I have 6:35 PM, so it looks like we have a announcement for the town meeting.
In accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Sturridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing in Burgess Elementary School Cafeteria at 45 Burgess School Road on Tuesday, September 28, 2021, at 6:35 PM, to consider amendments to the town zoning bylaw and zoning map. The proposed amendments will assert a new Article 21 agricultural entertainment overlay district within the zoning bylaw. This section will establish an overlay district which will allow for the placement of equine equine centers and related complementary uses to the locations in the town without altering the requirements applicable to uses permitted in the underwater zoning districts. As proposed, the new uses may include an equine center, including equestrian amenities, stables, rooms, and trainer's quarters, supporting facilities, as well as horse racing pursuant to a license issued by the Massachusetts Waiting Commission as required. A variety of additional uses may also be permitted by special permit, such as in-person and online sports betting, sale of horses, festivals, eating and drinking establishments, conference and meeting space, livestock and grain storage and sale, musical and other performances, disc shops, retail sale of agricultural products, recreation or vehicle parking, educational uses, veterinary office or clinic, community center, walking and educational trails, non-commercial recreational facilities, utilities, and other uses incidental and subordinate to the housing, riding, breeding, shoving, study, treatment, training, and racing of horses as determined and expressly permitted by the special permit granting authority. Also proposed is a definition for equine center, which is proposed to be inserted in its appropriate location in Section 300-2.2. A zoning map amendment is also proposed that will establish an agricultural entertainment overlay district consisting of the following parts of land. 180 Breakneck Road, MLDU 170, dash slash zero five zero four five, dash one eight zero, 16 Crossroad, MLBU 237, dash oh four seven five six, dash zero one six, and 181 Breakneck Road, 170, dash zero five zero five six, dash 187. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place as ordered.
Thank you very much, Sue. Before we begin, I'd like to briefly talk about the purpose of the hearing and establish some ground rules for its process. The hearing is obviously generated to meet the outside of Sturridge, and there may be those attending who are not familiar with the process for adopting this only bylaw, or the planning board's role in that process. The purpose of this public hearing is to review zoning bylaw amendments proposed to be submitted to town meeting for its vote in an upcoming special town meeting this fall. A positive vote in the town meeting is required to adopt any zoning bylaw. As many of you know, the planning board is legally required to hold a public hearing on proposed zoning bylaw before town meeting they vote to adopt that bylaw. The task of the planning board in holding the hearing is to review the proposed zoning bylaws and make a report with recommendations for town meeting. Bear in mind, however, the planning board's report and recommendation does not determine whether a zoning bylaw will be placed before town meeting for a vote, and it will not determine the outcome of the town meeting vote. It simply reports with recommendations. Also bear in mind that the planning board is concerned with planning. Assisted by the town's planning department, the board is tasked with studying the resources, possibilities, and needs of the community from a planning perspective, and identifying goals and policies for future growth and development. It is concerned with the long-term physical development of the town, and considers such things as economic development, housing, natural and cultural resources, open space, transportation, and public services in making its reports and recommendations. The planning board has no authority to investigate and cannot base its reports and recommendations on morality or ethics. If bylaws proposed at town meeting are thought to raise moral or ethical questions, town meeting members will individually determine whether and to what extent those questions should be on their votes. The hearing tonight concludes proposed zoning bylaw to create an overlay zoning district in which a particular use defined as equine center will be allowed by special permit. The board is well aware that an equine center has, includes some uses that may be controversial and raise moral or ethical concerns, including horse racing and sports betting. If you want to comment on this bylaw at tonight's meeting, please respect the work of the planning board and the members of the public attending this hearing, and limit your comments to planning questions and concerns. There are other and more appropriate platforms for discussing moral and ethical questions. The board respects the rights of members of the public to raise and debate moral and ethical questions as they see fit, and the right of town meeting members to consider such questions and make their votes. But that debate is beyond the board's authority and the scope of tonight's hearing. It will hinder the board's ability to hear and address planning concerns and carry out its public duty. The board is considered a proposed zoning bylaw, and testimony must be limited to the bylaw and its effect on the planning and land use concerns of the town. Please respect the board's direction in this matter. To a lot of everyone who's interested to participate, when I open the floor to public comment, those wish to comment, please give your name and address before commenting, and please try to limit your comments to two minutes, and also refrain if possible from repeating in detail what is already said. So first, we'll have a presentation from Tom Planted, Gene Devant, who give an overview of the bylaw, and then we'll open up for questions from the board before we have any questions.
Thank you. And good evening to members of the public, the proponents that brought this forward, and other officials that are present this evening. So as the board is aware, the town was approached by Unilever Horsefront LLC in June of last year, and the conceptual plan to bring an equine center to the town of Sturridge was proposed at that time. A presentation was made to the board of selectmen on July 6th, and a discussion took place as to what in general would need to occur if this proposal were to be filed in the town of Sturridge. One of the components discussed was the development of zoning bylaw that would allow for this use, as we currently do not have a mechanism to permit this. Another component would be designating a location on the zoning map that would become the overlay district. At the end of the presentation to the board of selectmen, a vote was taken by the board of selectmen, and the vote was three to one, to have Mr. Genji Gian move forward with the process with the board of selectmen's support step by step. It was at that time I began work with the proponents, Mr. Jeff Bridges, our town administrator, town councilor, and the proponents on the development of the draft zoning bylaw for this purpose. This task was not taken lightly. We worked collectively for the better part of the year on the draft bylaw which we had presented to the board of selectmen in August. As part of that process, I reviewed zoning bylaws in other states that had similar uses, and conducted research on the types of facilities and amenities that are normally associated within similar developments. I also requested of the proponents that I gave to tour a biodigester facility in Deerfield, so I could better acquaint myself with components and the technology, as it was something I was not familiar with. Town council has been involved during the supplier process of drafting the bylaw, as has Mr. Bridges. The document provided to the board of selectmen for consideration is the result of this effort. At the board of selectmen's meeting held on August 17th, the board referred the attached draft agricultural entertainment overlay district zoning bylaw to the planning board for public hearing. The legal notes have been advertised, and all parties have been notified as required. Additionally, we notified all others within 300 feet of the property in the town of Sturridge. We have provided links, involuntarials to the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission in Union, Connecticut, as he has reached out for information. And Mr. Bridges and I have had a meeting with Connecticut Council Governments to provide them all of the information we have as well. As of the date of this report, as actually as of this evening, we now have received approximately 39 emails and 14 calls from entrusted parties. All copies of that testimony have been provided to the board. It was very difficult to tell where most of the correspondence came from. Some were from other states, and a few were identified as coming from within the town of Sturridge. Most of them were opposed to horse racing for ethical and treatment reasons. Three letters received were in support of the application. Two mentioned the zoning bylaw a bit in passing, but most of the comment was related to the horse racing aspects of the proposal. The issue before the board tonight is the zoning bylaw with proposed zoning map amendment. We did have copies of the zoning map available on a large scale out on the floor, and we have provided copies of the bylaw and the map to all of the ocean people this evening, and it has been available on the board's side. This zoning map and bylaw amendment, approved by town meeting, would allow for the uses contained within the bylaw to occur if certain standards are met. Horse racing is a lawful activity within the state of Massachusetts, subject to a license issued by the State Commission. Off-tar betting, which is also noted within the bylaw as a use that may be permitted, is currently under discussion by the legislature. If this activity is not legalized in Massachusetts, it will not be legal in Sturridge. The proposed bylaw should be reviewed as any other normal, excuse me, bylaw is normally reviewed. The issue at hand is whether or not this bylaw is appropriate for the town, and whether the location is appropriate for this type of brand use. Once a bylaw is adopted, any project meeting the criteria of the bylaw and the location designated could be proposed, at which time appropriate studies and plans will be provided as part of the special permit application that will come before the planning board. And now I'll go through a little bit of, or actually I'll provide an overview of this on bylaw that's for you this evening. That was some background information on how we arrived here. So the proposal before the planning board is a new section to be inserted as Article 21. This would allow for an equine center which would be defined as integrated facilities operating pursuant to a common coordinated plan providing for housing, riding, breeding, shoving, study, treatment, trainings, and racing of horses and other equestrian related uses. As proposed, this is an overlay district, meaning anything in the underlying district may still be permitted on the property in the absence of the proposed or current equine center. So in other words, single-family homes and agricultural uses and other things currently allowed in that zoning district may continue to be permitted. The overlay district as proposed will be comprised of 180 and 181 Breakneck Road and 16 Crossroad. Lastly, it is also proposed that a new definition for an equine center be inserted in its appropriate location within the bylaw. The bylaw as proposed follows the forenet numbering of the existing bylaw as recently codified at the annual town meeting. The re-codification was just approved by the Attorney General's Office last Monday, so we'll be using our new numbering system. Those sections are followed by permitted uses, which are an equine center, and use regulations for an equine center, which list the items that must be included as part of any proposal for an equine center. And when I say permitted, I mean to say permitted by a special permit. The next section is additional uses that may be established by a special permit in addition to the equine center, and that is followed by a listing of prohibited uses. Those sections are followed by a variety of performance standards that must be met in order to receive planning board approval. Dimensional standards, recreational vehicle parking standards, additional regulations and medical requirements follow. Section 300-21.3, permitted uses specifically listed equine center defined above as allowed by special permit, and it also notes the planning board is a special permit granting authority for this article. So similar to the marijuana overlay district, a proponent may not even apply for approval until they have an executed post-community agreement. Therefore, in addition to all the standards contained within this bylaw, this agreement must be negotiated and executed by the board of selectmen, and then submitted to the planning board as part of the application process. The performance standards and application requirements are similar to other zoning sections. For instance, the Village Gateway District was adopted as an overlay district and contained its own set of performance standards and medical requirements that must be met for the board to consider granting approval. This bylaw proposal has remained, as I said, available online, and I can go through each of the sections of the bylaw if you share the likely to do so, or if you think that is the case.
Okay, so next I'll open up the questions to the board. Any major questions to add?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Thank you. On page two, we're talking about horse racing, and it says that there's going to be at least six racing days in an eighteen-month period, but there's no other requirement. Is there a discussion about having that?
Yes, there actually was discussion on having that in the host community agreement, and I believe that said at ten? Ten. A maximum of ten racing days.
Per year.
Per year.
So no less than six racing days in an eighteen-month period, and no more than?
Ten in a twelve-month.
Ten, not ten weekends, but ten days.
Ten days.
In twelve months.
In twelve months.
And is it appropriate to reflect that in a revision to this?
I believe Town Council's regulation was that it be located in the host community agreement.
Which is a correct answer for a public board anyway, so that's satisfying.
Yes.
On the same page, two, under B, and the last line, it states that any facility common care paid.
Okay, thank you.
That was great. On page four, number two, so I don't remember. I'm curious why the requirement of only eight percent exclusion zone with hot column conditions doesn't apply here, where we know that there's going to be significant earth work in proximity to wells.
So that is not excluding the application to other conservation conditions, excluding the requirement for an additional term for this earth removal. The planning board's special permit granting authority would also be reviewing the earth removal at the time that you begin the site planning, the special permit application. So it was purely to not have duplication of efforts on the earth removal.
Where is the advocate who would be going, subject to hot column fertile earth conditions anyway?
The, well, that would not remove anything for the applicant going with hot column, but what it would eliminate is the applicant going to the board of selectmen for a special permit.
Understood. Okay. General comments on here is the word reasonable in a lot of locations, which I heard your intro that you refer to other ordinances, and I'm wondering if that is a result of typical means of methods and language.
Yes.
Okay. In number H of those special events, what qualifies as a special event?
Anything not enumerated as a permitted use, so the bylaw's I have to, first, recent frustrating agriculture projects, market fairs, festivals. So I would say the fairs, the festivals, anything that is going to happen on a very limited basis. So the fair would be a special event. That's not something that would take place on a daily basis, it'll be part of the overall application to the planning board, but within the planning board's order of conditions, I would recommend, and I would expect, that we could have a condition that specific special events like fairs, festivals, it might be the Boy Scouts campout for the weekend, that would be a special event, something that's not taking place on a regular basis in a part of the fixed infrastructure on-site. So?
So we wouldn't need to enumerate what all those special events would be, but it would be a use that isn't happening on a regular?
On a regular basis.
Understood.
And you wouldn't want to enumerate them, because it may change as time goes on. It might be a harvest market today, or a harvest festival, but it could also be a craft fair or something like that.
Agreed. On number J, we're talking about unapproved grass overflow parking areas. The requirements of this bylaw shall not apply regarding location, surface material, space delineation, lighting, electric vehicles, and landscaping, which I mostly agree with except for lighting, which, looking at our language in our lighting bylaw, says all parking and pedestrian routes shall be suitably lighted. There's more language in the bylaw, but that's the requirement. For the grass overflow parking areas, I think lighting as a safety item should not be not required in subsection J.
Sorry.
I don't know clearly how you want to handle the conversation with the board about this, or if you want to just take that as a comment and keep moving, but?
Well, we can try to.
I might just look that up, and you'll have to be our lead, because I have a nearly numbered by law for a minute, and I'm not familiar with all these sections. About sixteen years, we're using the old one.
Right. I have one for a friend.
So actually, in looking at it, for lighting and parking standards, all parking lots and pedestrian routes shall be suitably lighted. Light shall be appropriately styled, shall be partial or full cutouts, and shall be energy efficient. Illumination levels shall conform with illuminating engineering society standards. Feed where practical exterior lighting installation shall include tiny external sensors or phone cell controllers that turn lights off during daylight hours or during hours the light is not needed to reduce overall energy consumption and eliminate uneven lighting. For typical business parking lots after active hours, illumination shall be no greater than required for security purposes. In the case of one or more tenants may open beyond the hours of the majority of property, appropriate levels of light shall be maintained for security and safety of those working at and visiting the establishment. So our thought process behind that is not that lighting wouldn't be required, but that permanent lighting to light the pedestrian ways of parking lot may not be appropriate in a grass area. So for instance, if there were an event that was going to make use of the overflow parking, for example on race days, it is anticipated that as part of the process, temporary lighting would be brought in to illuminate that overflow parking. However, in looking at this, my thought really was that it would create a lot of unnecessary light pollution in areas that may only be used for those ten race days a year, or if there's a large festival. So that was the thought process behind there, not that lighting wouldn't be required, but that these particular standards would be required.
Understood. Okay. I'll point out that a little bit later, the same section, I'm talking about three lines down, it says that the special permit granting authority may include these three conditions, including blah blah blah, and lighting.
Yes.
So the planning board would have an opportunity in the future for that as well?
Yes.
On the next page, five, under letter M of the bylaw, it says no waste shall be stopped by us closer than 125 feet from any permanent casual structures, and it goes on from there. Looking back at letter, what's the word I get? There was a requirement that a capital structure could be within 300 feet for another capital structure, and then later it talks about how, what was that? It seemed to me like there was a section earlier beyond the law that said, I was there, this, number F, any structure erected shall be available at 300 feet for any capital structures located outside of the district. But then on M, we say that we can stop by the door closer. Did I read that well?
Not really.
Highly suggest that that 125 wants to be at 300, that needs to be consistent, but that's just a thought that jumped out at me.
I think it is just a inconsistency. I think one of these lines has changed after three hundred.
Thank you. All right. And you talked about doing studies, but you addressed that in the requirements. Oh, point G talks about maximum service. Sixty percent of 150 acres is 90 acres of the purpose, which seems excessive. It is sixty percent relative to the proposed development. Is sixty percent relative to post-development from the line of opening?
Yes, and also in comparison to our other kind of commercial districts that we have, that are seventy percent.
So if we had a one or two acre site, kind of the downtownish area with a restaurant and parking lot, they would have seventy percent of curvius?
Unless it was in a commercial tourist, then it's not limited, they can have.
And so they would probably use left, right, and entire property, their building, their facilities, their parking lot. These guys, but they're agricultural, they're one hundred and fifty acres, sixty percent seems excessive. Is that required to this layout, what you're trying to do?
I don't think that we've done any calculations, because of course I should know the plans, and you have to look at this bylaws, not necessarily for this applicant, but for any applicant.
But I would imagine that any applicant that would come in on a ten percent plus or minus percentage chunk would probably be within the same. Like, looking at a planning development on that, is that all sixty percent filled out?
Well, I think you have to think about that, that to support something like this, you'd need at least four thousand surface parking spaces and the overflow parking. So you have the parking area, the roadways in, the restaurant, sports bar, the grandstands, the accessory structures, so.
So I guess that goes to the definition of the curvius, if the track itself is not asphalt. Is that incurious because it's of processed material?
Definitely not.
And if you go over to a parking lot, would it be incurious?
No.
And I remember, remember, three thousand cars in the parking lot, four thousand, but that's here in. Okay, I just can't get over that number sixty percent. I'm not sure if anybody else on the board has a thought on that. Number seven point D, recreational vehicle as a temporary residence. I know we have a number of accommodations for residential, for the owner or the people going in there. What do we define as temporary?
This is really for participants in the racing and or other decline events such as horse shows. It's very common for people to travel with their horse trailer and their RV, because they need to stay onsite with their horses. So if they're there for the weekend, a week, participating in a dressage event, they cannot leave their horses unattended. So normally they live on the property while the event is taking place.
Right. So we don't foresee a risk of having people with a parking lot becoming a parking community?
No, because everything that's down here will be by special permit of the planning board, and it will have that order of conditions.
On the same page, number R, in the signage, are, would we invite a typical commercial applicant who goes to the design review committee, who receives approval, and then the planning board moves on from there? This says that it's with the advice of the design review committee, so is that proposed in a different?
No, the, the design review committee is advisory to the planning board.
And so the approval that they grant is an advisory?
Is an advisory, yes.
So this is consistent with that?
Yes.
Last page, number eight. This is really just a paragraph, if you could leave the acreage behind the address on number two. Just the format we got, where we have a street address and an acreage. And I apologize for taking up so much time.
Okay, so I guess we will open this up for public comments. Just remember, please come up and identify yourself, if somebody agrees to change the form of the document.
Thanks, nice to see everybody. This is Yoko. I have a couple of questions first, and? Jamie Goodwin, two sixty-two Main Street, sorry about that, Jamie. First of all, just? Ted, Tess, Tess?
Turning it on, we'll do that. All right, thank you very much. Again, Jamie Goodwin, two sixty-two Main Street, Servage. The first question I have is about under three hundred dash twenty-one point three permitted uses, which is the part that provides that the planning board is permittinging it. It references section three hundred dash eighteen point two. I wasn't sure where that was, because that's on your document, at least we're in the document. Yeah, because they're all three hundred twenty-ones, I think.
So three hundred point eighteen point two is zoning order appeals in the bylaw, so. Oh, yeah, so three hundred dash eighteen point two talks about zoning order appeals being a special permit rating authority unless otherwise designated. So in this case, it's otherwise designated, thus the planning board.
Thanks, Jamie. So that's the first part. The rest are more concerns, beginning with the sec, three hundred twenty-one four, A, small a, which basically states that the, sort of the purpose of the question you use, including but not limited to. I'm not sure why you're using stands of language here, it seems like this is something that should be targeted. I understand that it's meant to be example giving, but when you get used to that particular set of language, you're inviting comparable uses that are unforeseen, maybe something like that higher. So that's just the, more of a style issue. My larger concern comes in the next section on page two, in B, and the language is very confusing when you first read it. It says, equine center may also include the following additional uses. If expressly included in any EOD special permit issued therefore, provided that such uses are and will remain in addition to the use of the equine center for the housing, riding, breeding, showing, study, treatment, training, and racing courses. So that was a little hard for me to process, but as a kind of a fact, it, you know, it first reads me like it's repetitive, like the purpose of this is to, you know, make sure we're listing out the functions that this property will not be, so it could make sense. But the problem is that when you go to A, G, arguably I, J, L, O, W, Y, A, A, and C, C, those don't really necessarily relate to horse racing, some do, some don't, but they don't necessarily. They're related to revenue, they relate to, you know, these money coming in, so they can justify, proponents can justify having horse races. And so this framing is far too broad for my case. I think it should be far too broad, even if you agree with this project, because, and my logic is, as this goes down the road, and part of the issue here is we have not seen the updated post-agreement, or Slackman has not received that yet, so maybe that will offset some of this. But basically, they're saying that anything that kind of relates to these categories that drives revenue is somehow connected to horse racing or the running of an equine facility. And as you go down the line, these proponents are others, that invites litigation, and Mr. Field, although lovely gentleman, has somewhat tedious history, which I don't mind, because I'm a litigator. But it's, it needs to be tighter, because this invites suit very easily. You can survive a motion to dismiss on this without issue, and I'm just very concerned about it.
Well, actually, Town Council listed the draft of this section.
Sure.
And it was to allow accessory uses. So the purpose behind it is to make sure that you always have the equine center, and then these are accessory uses that may be permitted as accessory to the equine center. And I guess defer to Town Council on the language, because as I said, he worked closely with me on that section.
But, but think about it, if they, the horse racing industry is going to state it over and over again, that horse racing is not the principal revenue driver. The sports betting is the only reason they're here, because that doesn't go through, it doesn't go through. So within the breadth of this list, you know, be it wastewater or bringing energy by a jester, as long as the running horse is around that lap, it really can do anything for the rest of the property. So I just feel that that language should be tightened up, and otherwise, I think it would be a fair enough.
Fair enough.
Yeah, this wording is pretty consistent with what we've had.
It is. It is. Yeah, so it is very consistent with other language, and we went back and forth on several iterations with Jonathan, I think Jonathan's sort of been working with me on this. And, you know, really, when I looked at this, I thought, you don't really necessarily want to have the live simulcast horse racing if you don't really have the equine center. So I think, you know, the main part of this proposal, and granted, it has been said that, you know, the off-track betting is really what's going to help subsidize this, but I think the main purpose of this is the, you know, the horse racing, the retirement facility for the thoroughbreds, the therapeutic riding, the other horse-related events. So I don't think that you would want to change it, I really do believe these are accessory uses.
Anyone else?
Tom Creed in Westwood Drive. My points are of mine of the last section on page three, Boy's Jersey Studio. I spoke to a couple of county officials, so it should be that, but that includes tattoos, if I could be more specific on that point. My other points are related to the traffic study. I assume you may have a traffic study. Do you see? At some point.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
You said you asked about that.
Oh, yes, that.
Good. In a traffic study, I'd like you to include Benton Road along with Leadmine Road, it's on the section of it. In time, people will learn that shortcut, I'm absolutely convinced that Leadmine Road can't, the structure can't handle the traffic. And finally, where the bridge across eighty-four is going to be, I would ask proponents to state that out of the flag. We had that at the meeting of the senior staff, and I really didn't get a satisfactory answer. So I think if you're to state that out of the flag, on these fifteen sites, I'd very appreciate it. And one last answer. The actual shape of the lot, how did you come up with that? Everywhere else in town, when we've done zoning, it was planned, and the shape of this district is so odd, and I know it's a collection of three lots, but it makes you wonder who's doing the planning.
Well, I guess it's similar to the Village Gateway District, although much smaller, the shape of that lot was kind of made based on the parcel shape.
But that was a much more, the commercial?
Part commercial, part residential, yes.
But it has a plus. The shape of what, that sum, do you have it designed for, that is opposed to this? Usually it's voided by a two-hundred-foot setback in the commercial district or stream, it's never been blocked once.
Actually, more and more communities are going parcel-based zoning, which is actually something we can discuss in here. It actually makes it much easier, although you have to look at some of the very deep lots to see if that makes sense.
All right, I'll agree with you.
Tom Miller, five oh one Leadmine Road. So this is a project that has potentially huge impacts on Servage. And given that it has the potential of having such a large impact, why would it make sense to delay? My assumption is that this is going to be put up for vote at an upcoming county meeting in October, is that right?
That's true.
Okay. I don't know about other residents in the community, but it's only happened in the past month or so. And I became aware of this primarily because of the promotional material that the proponents sent out in the mail, the public meetings that were held at the Public House. Given the importance of this vote, it seems to me it makes good sense to give people more time to better understand what's involved, the pros and cons, discuss all of that, so that they are able to make an informed, intelligent decision. And what is the downside of delaying this until, say, next year?
Well, I believe that there's a certain application for the license required. I think this first came to the retirement commission over a year ago.
Over a year, no.
That's right.
I'm just trying to answer your question. And then went forward to the board's agreement, and then the search was to talk to this particular bylaw. So I would say, how many letters did you say we had altogether?
So I've been working on it since August twenty twenty actively. I became aware of the project in June of twenty twenty, and it was, I believe, that the board's agreement was meeting in August that they voted to move forward with the process and to have me work with proponents and Mr. Bridges.
Right. Each time when, you know, the decision by a public party, it has been an open, you know, panel meeting and so on. So I do think that, you know, this information has developed and been out there for a length of time.
To the public? Was that available to the public?
We posted everything that we had available on our website under recent filings, as we do with our?
And you think that is sufficient information to have a willing for residents give a vote in about a month? And even if you do, what is the downside of delaying it to ensure that people have adequate time?
Well, you know, I do feel that it's enough time, and so.
I think I would say that last year we rewrote the entire zone bylaw, including many, many chapters, and we have the same process of having things on our website and at planning board meetings, so.
But you still haven't answered my question, what is the downside of delaying?
The downside is the project must move forward to certain timeframe, there are timeframes established by the state for the issuing of licenses. They have to be, you know, time for the opponents to actually buy property, do the planning, get designing done. So I mean, any of these things are certainly time-sensitive, our projects are generally all time-sensitive.
So the timing of this is driven by state requirements?
Well, it's driven by having a project become, a project becomes successful, and it's permitted, and it's licensed, so yes, I mean, projects have to move forward in a timely manner. I believe that this has, you know, done it, I think it's, it's been out there in the public, whether we?
Not, not really.
Well, all we can do is put our agenda out there, we published a meeting, I think.
Were there any public meetings prior to the ones that we had in September?
There were public meetings, or Slackman, there were public meetings.
We had one last year, and a couple this year, with Slackman, we had at least two, if not three, last summer, and then had some additional ones this year, so yes, there have been.
Hi, my name is Greg London, I'm great network. Thank you all for your hard work on this. Couple of questions for you, looking at this. Can you just clarify the racing days, because we were told that a racing day consists of Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then a day of rest, and two weekends. So is it really just ten days, weekends, not clear on that?
My understanding was three weekends, that consists of ten race days per season, per twelve-month period.
That doesn't seem to be clear at the start.
So in the bylaw, we have no less than six in an eighteen-month period. The maximum race days would be included in the host community agreement, that would be negotiated. The maximum race days would be included in the host community agreement that would be negotiated before the board of selectmen.
So I have an issue with that because you just explained that you had all your documentation, and I appreciate that. These guys have put up their stuff as well. Mine is the host agreement, which seems very critical for county to understand what's in that document, what you've been doing. Why isn't that going transparent enough?
Well, it's really no different than medical marijuana overland districts. You couldn't finalize a host community agreement unless a project were legally able to go forward. So while they started, um, providing documentation to the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen, there is no zoning to allow for this right now. So you could go through an awful lot of that without a host community agreement and finding the voters really don't want to see this in the community, and there would be no zoning that allowed it, so.
Hey, Jeff, I understand that's a good point, but do you, on the flip side of that, a lot of things have been referenced to that host agreement, saying, oh, it is covered in the host agreement, you can be right up to that. So that's why I just, well, these are none of the predictions that I've seen have shown anything regarding that. So that's really concerning. And the other piece that I have, on page three, the equine center shall not enter the farm, which is great, so A. It refers specifically to slot machines or other forms of gambling other than on horse racing, unless expressly permitted pursuant to this article. Can you explain what that means?
Yes, it means the off-track betting up in the previous section may be permitted, but that casinos and slot machines would not be permitted. So if you go back to subparagraph B.
Unless expressly permitted pursuant to this article.
That's right. So this article is twenty-one, and on the previous page under B.
Yep.
Subparagraph A, the line in simulcast horse, horse racing with wagering in person and online sports betting. So that may be permitted, but the slots and casino-type activity is prohibited. That's correct.
Okay, that's good enough. Because my understanding, yeah, that's thirty-eight, you know, and Brad would have done work before to get this going.
With the off-track betting.
With the off-track betting, and the other places I've been compared to, like Sarasota, they're all casinos.
Yes.
That's, that's it, and you guys are watching out for that. Um, just my own knowledge, just so I understand this, those settings are done prior to getting permits done? So things like a traffic study that kept being brought up at all these meetings that townspeople like myself are concerned with, that doesn't matter until we vote to say, yeah, then we can go forward, these guys will go forward, get a permit? That's just the process?
Yeah, that is just the process. So it's similar to any other permitted use that we have in our zoning bylaw. Unless the zoning bylaw allows it, um, an applicant wouldn't go through with, sometimes honestly, hundreds of thousands of dollars of engineering studies, so.
You've been brought up stuff like lighting, we don't need a certain amount of lighting. You're basing that on what? Are there actual studies regarding that, or you're just saying, based on what I looked at in other tracks?
No, so actually what I said was, there are certain sections in our existing zoning bylaw that refer to lighting that require permanent lighting at all parts of the premises.
Sure.
The section that was being referred to was overflow parking, that would be a grass area, that would only be used on certain heavy traffic days. And what I said was, you wouldn't want necessarily permanent lighting to be installed in those overflow areas, but rather look at it as part of the permitting process to evaluate what might be appropriate for temporary lighting in those areas so that not creating a lot of light pollution where it's not needed, say, three hundred days out of the year, and we only need it for a short period of time.
And you base that overflow days based on what? You're experiencing race tracks?
No, the overflow parking would be anything that can't fit in the surface parking lot, that would be grass parking lot.
Okay, so in general?
In general, yes. And they, and as part of the, I don't know if you review the performance standards, but as part of that, they're required to submit a traffic management plan that gives traffic indicators for whether it's one event happening that day, or whether they have multiple events on the property at any one time.
If you got required.
No, it's required as part of the submittal.
Every time, so let's, can I explain that too? So they do a permit first?
No, so they apply for a permit.
Okay.
And as part of the application process, all of the submittal requirements that are shown in this, in the bylaw. So really, if you look at pages four and five, it talks about standards. And then page six gives you the submittal requirements. So it's a copy of an executed host community agreement, a development impact statement, which if you look in the planning board rules and regulations, that talks about environmental impact, traffic impact, pollution, light pollution, things like that. A traffic impact assessment, in, again, in our rules and rights, we talk in specifics about what must be included as part of that traffic impact assessment. And then during the public process, as we just heard a public comment this evening from Mr. Creedon, he pointed out two intersections that we thought shouldn't be included. So we go through that process.
Sorry, so is that for every event?
This is for the application.
For the application to get going?
To, to file the planning board to get the special permit. And it, it goes on and on about, you know, waste management plans, parking plans, and dust control.
Which is great, again, I have to step back to my original point, which just seems a little odd still to me, that we're voting on something that's going to be a huge revenue generator, possibly massive amount of traffic, potentially crime, without any setting being done. I guess that's just the process.
So very self-conscious.
I agree with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Harvard Research Center, Ledmine Road. Um, I think it would be, you would want to know, for instance, how many horses are going to be on this, uh, in this area? And how many, um, facilities for people to live, how many people are going to live there? Um, do you have any of that information? How many stables are there?
The number of stables would be project-based, so whether it's this applicant or another applicant, they would have to identify how many stables. The number of dwelling units are actually limited by the bylaw. Um, subparagraph, on page two, three hundred dash twenty-one dash four, subparagraph B, N, says up to two freestanding dwelling units may be allowed on the premises to be occupied by owner of the facility, or by employee, operator of the facility, caretaker, or watchman of the facility.
Okay, my question to that would be, what kind of, is this a dormitory-type thing, or, you know, uh, how many, how many people are going to be on the, what are these, on a regular basis?
You really wouldn't know until you have an application for it.
Okay. And we don't know how many horses to speak of? Or stables or anything?
Sorry, I can't give you the example.
Stables, no, we don't know how many horses or stables? Um, how many people that are going to have on a regular basis?
Well, it, it would certainly have to, you know, meet the intended requirements of this bylaw. And all that, the particular project coming forward would be what all the, uh, reviewed by the planning board as special permit grant authority is going through. So, the key information on, on that, uh, would be presented before it comes to issue in any project that goes. And this is a bylaw, really, to establish the guidelines, the rules and regulations for this type of an overlay district, for this type of use.
So it's the, um, planning boards of top to, uh, keep up with this, and we know, uh, what might be going on and shouldn't be going on. And imagine if they want to have a special permit or something like that, they'll come for a permit. But, um, does anybody police this, um, this contract? That it's doing what it's supposed to do?
I'm sure the security statement's a little bit off, you know, that is.
Yes, so, so actually, this will be, if this goes forward, this will be policed on many levels. So on one level, you'll have the planning board special permit with its order and conditions that would be enforced through the planning department and the zoning enforcement officer. On another level, you have a host community agreement, which will be enforced by the board of selectmen. On another level, you'll have light safety issues, uh, traffic management that will be enforced through the police department. And so each, I guess, component of this that requires any kind of enforcement has, you know, a, an assigned department under the Mass judge laws or just by practice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Chris Rose, Wood Seventeen, Hill Road. My question is in regard to definition of racing day, six racing days in each eighteen-month period. So does that mean the owner will be able to go take one horse, race around the track against the clock, and that constitutes a racing day, and therefore they keep their, uh, off-track betting business going? Have you thought about that?
So it's my understanding that that's really defined in the gaming permission regulations, they define what a race day is. And so we wanted to ensure that when we did this bylaw, that it wasn't just kind of a cover for the off-track betting. And we wanted to make sure that there was always some form of horse racing going on on property, because that's what the proposal was before us.
So should we reference, what, what did you mention, the, or someone?
It's in the gaming permission regulation, so.
So what does that say?
I don't have it on me, I'm sorry, I don't.
Should we reference, have you, Eric?
Do you have that on?
Hi, sorry, Bob Dory, Jordan Davis. Um, yeah, there is a gaming permission license that has to be done, and I think all that. So pretty specific, seven, ten, sixty days, three days, a week. So that's what you have to do, what you need to do.
Are races multiple horses, just one race against the clock?
I, I begin a mission with thirty. We get that, we get that one horse that's on the track against the clock as a race. Because it'd be a lot of things in the mission. None.
You might want to leave that one.
And I, I'd just like to just add, it looks like on race days, we have about two hundred horses.
The previous question, thank you. Thank you. Yes, exactly.
Alan Kirkwood, River Road Silverage, I've got a product and I've got a question. So the question, and the question regard, was regarding the, um, section that says endgame arraignment is tied by national laws, chapter twenty-three K. It was on, it talks about the double taxation, cable game, slot machines, other forms of gambling, other than horse racing. Um, there, in other states, historical horse racing machines that look just like a slot machine, but strictly built with historical races, because it's horse racing, it's allowed, it's a loophole in the slot scene a lot of states, and I'm sure it's a loophole in Massachusetts. Uh, they mentioned to us before that they don't plan on doing that, unless it's expressly prohibited in this document, and then it would be allowed. I just don't understand why, if they said they don't want to do it, and the town has in the past voted that they don't want to see them, and I think that most of us don't want to be seen on, as we've heard that term, seen on for horse tracks, why this document doesn't specifically prohibit historical horse racing machines? You mentioned slot machines, but we don't mention HHR machines. And that would extend the, the gambling time from those three days for sporting events to seven days a week, which would draw a lot more people, because it would be the same thing to have a slot machine at a casino. And it's happened in the past, if they don't, they said no to it, to a casino. I think that, that's a loophole, a doubt, that should be addressed, especially since, as they've already said, they don't want it, it shouldn't be an issue to add it in there to say, to include not having HHR machines or sort of horse racing machines. The other thing, uh, my comment is this towards access to these properties. They have said before that they want access through the, through the rest area, through the, through and around the, uh, the town landfill. We've heard from the Florida Health that a fire carry that they can't go through the landfill. And according to the, from the, uh, under the federal highway, they can't use the rest area as an access point for offering. And, uh, without those two options, that leads to a wrecked road, or access to the state of Connecticut, the state line off of whatever road that is down there behind the, uh, the, the trailer sales place. So I think by allowing this zoning, uh, it doesn't really address access. And wrecked road could become the major access to this point, whether you want it or not. Because if the, if the federal government says, no, you can't go through that highway rest area, which is in their guidelines, it says absolutely not, can't have it. Um, you're either going through the fifteen, putting bridges over the highway, using the Venus of binary contact, and to think that the people aren't going to take shortcuts through college, and over Ledmine, and over Finley, or whatever roads are over there, that's going to happen. Or just like on, on my road, any, any holiday weekend, river road becomes flawed, and people using ways to get off the highway to avoid the two or three-mile backlog of eighty-four. And we're cutting up over Farquhar, or we're having, I'm sure many of you have seen those social media posts. Uh, I think that this is kind of short-sighted by, um, allowing these zones, you're allowing the potential to have those secondary roads impacted by major amounts of traffic. And not just limited to those three race days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, for holiday weekends, because we already know that if you talk about these going to be concerts we're having, and it's going to be more traffic. So I just think that by allowing the zoning in that area, you've limited the access points. They have limited access points. Once it's been approved, this agreement, this host agreement doesn't exist. It may exist in the future, but it doesn't exist right now. So by, by allowing this zoning without having that hashed out, I think that, you know, wrecked road will be a major entrance point for this to exist. That's my comment. That and the historical horse racing, I think you should prohibit it now so it doesn't become a slot machine type. Even though they're not slot machines, maybe for Friday, or maybe for Sunday. That's it, Eric.
Yeah, so we can have a section in the performance standards that does talk about roadways, saying that all roadways serving the equine center shall be of sufficient width, creating constructions serving post development. And then it goes on to talk about driving location, and reasonable conditions regarding roadway design. So I think that we would all agree that the local roads are not of sufficient, um, capacity to handle this.
If they're not of sufficient capacity, and the federal government has been there guidelines that that offland for the rest area cannot be used as an exit ramp, why is this even here? We don't have the, the, the road capabilities to allow it in that area.
So the proponent has initiated discussions with Mass DOT.
It's not Mass DOT, it's the federal government.
I understand, and I was going to say, we understand that we need to build a total highway. If that does not happen, there is no project.
But you've already zoned this, and there's nothing to prohibit that from going in through those other roads. They could say, okay, we're, we're going to go the subway.
I think, I think you said that in this, that the other roads can't handle it. But other, as you said, if it doesn't permit the eighty-four, there is a problem.
But it doesn't say that here.
Well, everything else that's part of permitting, the special permit grant authority, the requirements, will allow this to be a feasible project, or a project like it, does require it. So in other words, again, this is really the bylaw, the regulations to go with you, that gives us the ability to say, yes, you can have this in this location if all these other conditions are met.
We, we certainly understand that, but this also doesn't prohibit it from happening if that doesn't happen.
Well, if you can't get a special permit, and you can't reach these requirements, then you just can't get a special permit. Project doesn't count.
And I also would like you to consider the whole historical horse racing machine, because it is not specifically prohibited.
I think, uh, I think attorney Joe is making one of the best, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to be perfectly clear, those historic gaming, uh, machines and casino gambling, they're not allowed. They're not allowed today, they're not allowed tomorrow, it's not part of our project, that's just an assumption, it's not going to happen. And also, as we have said numerous public meetings, numerous times, access off his site, access to this project will come from I and Q. That's a commitment, it's going to be a host community agreement, it's not something that can live around or change. And we will build roads that need to be, that they need to be in order to make sure there's access.
Very. Can you say, I've got a question. When you say that the machines are not allowed, are they illegal?
Yes, class, class three gaming business illegal. Can't have it, can't have it.
Eric Gaspar for the Arrow Circle.
So I, I, not to belabor the point, but if the project is dead, if it doesn't come on. So, not to belabor the point, but if the project is dead, if it doesn't come off of date four, why can't it just be in this document? Because the host agreement is negotiated by five people. This is going to be voted on by the electorate of Sturbridge. So I would feel, as a resident of Sturbridge, a lot more comfortable if you folks would put this into the documents that is going to be voted on at town meeting by the residents of Sturbridge, and not leave it up to the baggage, with all due respect to the members of the selectmen here, of election wins and political wins, of having five people renegotiate or change the host agreement. So it'd make me significantly more uncomfortable. They have said, the project is dead if it doesn't come off of date four. You have said, by special permit, there's no way it can be done except for date four. So I don't understand the logic of not just specifically putting that in there so the residents of Sturbridge have an opportunity to make sure 100% that they are voting on that item.
You know, there's a few questions. The problem really is that this bylaw is subject to approval by the Attorney General's office. In other words, it's really has to be structured to allow it to be accepted as a bylaw. And putting in a specific restriction on a possible project at a particular location is not something that really can come into the bylaw.
Well, that about sums it up. And I would also say that the language that I put in for roadway access is very persistent with what we have in other sections of the bylaw, and with other bylaws that we've crafted.
Well, and I respect that, but you're asking the 6,000-plus voters of the town of Sturbridge to weigh in on this more article. And I am supportive of this project, now whether I am not supportive of this project, if there's any chance, any inkling whatsoever, that this could go anywhere but off of date four. And the applicants are saying that they will not run this project through, which I don't want to assume they'll intent on anyone. But the reality is, if that language is not in there, you're going to take a proponent of this, and I will become an opponent of this overnight. So I'm just one voter, but of the 227 people that showed up at the last town meeting, that's a significant portion, and I would be on the phones, I would be texting, I would be emailing, I would be calling, and I would be letting people know that we cannot support this if it does not expressly say that it's coming off of date four. Just one answer.
I don't think that would be a good idea to discuss. Highly inconsistent.
Thank you. My name is Dark Jason. I live on Mashapaw Lake in Union, off of Mashapaw Road, which is the road that we're curbing, alluded to behind Campers Inn. I have a couple of observations and related to a couple of questions I want to include. Environmental issues don't respect borders between towns and states. This project entailed a wide variety of detrimental, likely irreversible environmental impacts for residents of Union, Holland, and Sturbridge. For just one set of examples, wetlands, watercourses, aquifers, private wells, Lake Mashapaw, Little Mashapaw Pond, the Quinabon and Shetucket rivers, and beyond. In that context, two things were said in the Board of Selectmen's Public hearing two weeks ago that are concerning. First, it was flatly declared that the entire 380 acres, in question here tonight, that that entire 380 acres slopes north. But in fact, I have a map to give you that shows it quite clearly. The natural drainage from the southern half of the site looks anywhere but north. Instead, south of the paddocks that are shown on the proponent's rendering, all the wetlands which are shown on that is in dark green, and the streams from that drain in the direction of either Lake Mashapaw or Little Mashapaw Pond. Mashapaw Lake and Little Mashapaw empty westward to the head of the reservoir, in Holland, and on to the upper Quinabon. The lake also empty south via Big Old Brook and the Natural River to the Shetucket River. The Quinabon and Shetucket join in the north which form the plains, which generally store around the sound. And because of their unique environmental and conservation values, these two watersheds comprise a national heritage corridor, known as the Last Green Valley, Green by Day and Dark by Night, in partnership with the National Park Service. Mashapaw Lake is prized for its clean waters and is extremely popular with visitors and voted public via Big Old Hollow State Park and Mid Buck State Forest in Union. Mashapaw Lake is also very vulnerable to excess nutrients such as phosphorus and nitrogen that are likely to emanate from this project. The second thing that was said to the public at the Board of Selectmen's hearing was that there would be a 500-foot wide, there would be 500-foot wide buffer zones around the many wetlands on the site. But check that by looking at the football field, which is shown on the Area C in the rendering. I don't think that rendering is in the room tonight. But scaling from that, and then looking at the buffers which are around the stable complex, which is in the far southwest corner, the lower left of the rendering. That stable parking area is within yards, scant few yards of Ledline Road, which flows south of Ledline Pond to Little Mashapaw Pond.
I think you're bringing up certain some valid points, some points of concern.
I have a question.
By law itself, in other words, what we're trying to do with the bylaws is put control requirements and so forth in there. I think a lot of these comments would be best to be presented when a project is brought forward, and it's before the various committees would be involved in this.
Thank you.
Do you have a question on the bylaws, certainly I'd like to hear.
I do, and I'll get to that in a moment. The point I'm trying to make, sir, is that there was information passed to the public in the Board of Selectmen's Public hearing just two weeks ago, which I think a number of people will take as, you know, not to worry for the people in Union, in Holland, and Sturbridge about the detrimental effects that I've alluded to.
I think actually in spirit, there are a few boards that take approach of not to worry. I could see that this group would be just steps, which is pretty significant. So do you have a question on the bylaws, certainly we have to hear.
I do. So after two years of dialogue with the, between the proponents and the town, the public was told that the entire acreage slopes north, the wetland buffers would far exceed normal standards. In other words, no cause for Union or Holland or Sturbridge to worry about things like storm water, runoff pollution, pharmaceuticals, antibiotics, weed choke lakes, ponds, and so on. My question is, at what point, and by what part of the Sturbridge Town Government, or the Massachusetts authorities, when the planning and permitting process is going forward, do these and the other environmental impacts get the attention they deserve? I have two other questions.
You want to make next to that? So I think with a project like this, you'd be looking at several permitting paths that cannot be to go through. And one major one will be with the Conservation Commission. As you noted, there are a lot of wetlands on this property, and they need file an ANRAD or they should file an ANRAD, and that's for the delineation of the wetlands. And the Conservation Commission would generally have a peer review or review that, and then they either agree or disagree with those delineations until they come to agreement on where are the actual orders of the wetlands. And I'm paraphrasing, I'm not the conservation agent. And then the project would go through a process with the Conservation Commission called the Order of Notice of Intent, which is an application that goes to the commission and identifies how they're respecting land buffers, how they're protecting groundwater, how they're controlling stormwater. And then through the planning board as well, we have the groundwater protection district, and we have certain standards in there to protect the groundwater or drainage water. We have a water well in that area as well. And they also go through site plan approval, which requires this to be in the, what's called the development impact statement. And within that, we need to address questions on many of the environmental concerns that you're raising. So as it goes through the permitting process with the planning board and Conservation Commission, I think a lot of the information that you're bringing up here this evening, if this project goes forward, would be very welcome testimony at those hearings. And hopefully, if it gets to that point, the proponents and the various towns departments would be able to help you in looking at those issues and showing you on plans, how they plan to address things like stormwater management, and groundwater pollution, and manure storage, and fertilizer use, and pesticide use, and all of those things that you're concerned about. So very valid concerns that will have to go through a lot of scrutiny if it ever gets to that point in the process.
Thank you. And would those criteria apply only to impacts at Sturbridge, or impacts in major towns? And the reason I ask that is because I noticed that Sturbridge has a wellhead protection zone that spans northern third of the property in question. I would think that the same criteria that establishes that wellhead protection zone would apply to the private wells that are immediately across the state line to the south of the property and in the drainage area that the map shows goes south and not north. So the question is, would those issues, as they apply to Sturbridge, or that matter of Holland, be considered in the process?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with Connecticut laws, but in Massachusetts, if there's, say, a public water supply, now there are certain distances called the Zone One, the Zone Two, that certain improvements need to stay out of that area. So I would assume that Connecticut must have something similar that would have to be adhered to. So if there are abutting properties in Connecticut, through all this process, they would necessarily look at the impacts across the border, because we don't just plan in our orders. Hopefully, we're all planning regionally, and we're kind of looking at these issues, environmental issues. Don't respect town lines, they pass over the border. So I think absolutely that would have to be part of the study that they would be doing on the property.
Thank you. I would just add, as a servant, to think that after two years of proponent work and town work that you've all gone through, that those two facts can be so dispute, because it's not which way the water flows and the size of the buffer is. A question about the language in 300-21.22. That's on page... Just before permitted use, the last two lines I read, "Any provision these bylaws would apply to such use in underlying districts shall not apply unless expressly set forth in this article." So you just cited, I think, a number of things in the bylaws or requirements, but if I read that right, it seems that unless they're called out in this, in this particular document, this eight-page document that the town's going to vote on soon, those things are strictly right. Am I reading it wrong?
And after that, there's anything in the, any underlying district that you haven't addressed with a performance standard within this bylaw? And the groundwater protection district applies in all districts regardless of an overlay that you may have. So I think that's addressing your question, the groundwater protection district would still apply. That is not an underlying district that's forgiven, that's a district that applies to all, no matter where they're located.
Are those called out somewhere in here?
Yes. I believe it is all within performance standards, and the groundwater protection bylaw within the main subject.
Thank you. And the other, the final question I had goes to the question that was raised earlier about the 60% maximum impervious areas. 60%, there's a total of 380 acres here that are listed. When I first read that, I wondered if the 60% was a typo. The overflow parking is not to be impervious, am I correct?
Yes.
So how do we, why would every 60% of 380 acres, a lot of it in wetlands, to be allowed to be impervious?
So I use a similar standard to what we have in all of our other commercial films. Obviously, if you have wetlands, you're not going to be able to render that impervious. So at the end of the day, it may actually be less after going through that wetland delineation process on the safety. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Lennon, Ripken Road. Not well versed in town governance, so I apologize, and that's where some of my questions come in, and I've got to comment as well. So the process is, we're getting this information, on the 28th of October, the town will vote whether or not we approve this zone overlay. The zone overlay then allows for the proponent to submit an application. And then the applicant, the application comes to the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Selectmen is negotiating this, of course, setting the agreement. And then, and then what happens? All of that gets put out, and then the town gets to vote again, yea or nay, or is the town out once we go with the overlay?
So the town will decide on the zoning bylaw. If the zoning bylaw gets approved at town meeting, it requires a two-thirds vote. If that does get approved at town meeting, then that will go to the Attorney General's office for approval. After that time, or actually any time after the vote at a town meeting, the applicant can start their approval process with the town. One of the first components is a post-community agreement that must be negotiated and executed by the Board of Selectmen. Without that document, they cannot make applications to the planning board. If they receive the post-community agreement and that document is executed, then they can make an application to the planning board and submit all of the items that are required in the supplemental packet. In addition to the planning board approval process, as I just mentioned to John before you, there will be a Conservation Commission approval process. In addition to that, we also have a design review committee in Sturbridge that looks at the architectural design of any of the buildings that may be proposed, the lighting fixture type, the land saving, things of that nature. But it does not go back to the voters. It's entrusted in the Board of Selectmen that you elect, and planning board or design review committee members that are appointed to serve in those complexities ultimately make those decisions as a special permitting authority, as they would any other permitted use of the zoning bylaw.
That's my part of the conversation.
That's right.
The, so really, the decision, the decision for, and if there were concerns, citizens for one reason, whether it be moral, ethical, or really we want this in town, we think this is going to be liable, or whatever. The town is making a decision based on no traffic studies, no crime studies, no nothing. Our decision is just whether or not we want to, we want to go ahead and open the opportunity up, and then we get to the selectmen to work through this.
And the planning board to review the application.
Yeah, and I think the experience we have is that every other major project in town has moved forward and has only gotten approval when the traffic study shows, you know, it can be functional and actually work, has do all these things with this special permit agreement. So, you know, it isn't unusual, and that's the way projects start with this. If the town decides they don't want this type of development in the town, then the opportunity is to plead it at town meeting.
But the town has to basically make a decision at a point. You know, the town's basically making the decision, the voters of the town are making the decision whether or not to allow it.
It's a somewhat to be considered. It is quite an extensive project, there are many developments to go through, get permits and conservation from the planning board, and all these other things.
And all of those are open meetings, right, as the town chooses. My last comment is, I know that you kind of gave us the rundown on the planning board not making an ethical or moral decision, taking those into consideration. In my opinion, this is the utmost priority for the planning board, to undertake a project that is ethical and moral, because it's viable, because that impacts the viability of the town of Sturbridge. It impacts our well-being going forward, like people want to bring their kids to school here, whether it impacts our property value. So I understand that that's what this meeting is about, but I certainly urge you to consider more ethical decisions around this topic.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kirsty Pesci. I live at 138 McGillpin Road. Thank you for all your hard work on this project. Just to build on the point that was just made, I am a municipal attorney, and while these other, while each board will evaluate the project based on future documents, the boards have an obligation to allow certain projects, regardless of whether they like them or not, if they meet certain criteria. So while there is a review process, if the applicant ticks certain boxes, the board will, you know, each of the boards of commissions will approve the project. So I think it's really important, again, building on the last speaker's point, your really yes or no comes in a month of that public town meeting. And I think, I think that you folks would agree with that, correct? That if an applicant comes to the planning board and...
And that's really the whole purpose of telling lots of, you know, if the criteria fits successfully, then the person who wants to do that, the company might have the right to do it. So we have given them the right to do this if we do this bylaw exactly right.
Exactly. Because I think we can't expect the boards or commissions to suddenly do a one-eighty when they don't have the power to do that. So if something's...
No. If the traffic study doesn't work, they don't have the, the connections to the equal and all these other things, then the project won't work. What do you say in terms of, is if they meet those criteria, that is what all the words can be judged on, either the state law, the conservation law, the transit, our own zoning bylaws, that's what the criteria is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I've been coming to town with these providing little more than sixty years. I know it's not a nation job, so it's not any committee, commission, whatever. And I applaud Jeanne Boban for the work she has done. I was a supporter of Jeanne Boban way back when she was over in Tree River. But I think in this case, the planning board, as a board, is got the cart behind the horse. No, actually, it's supposed to be, ahead of the horse. It's had other stuff that's behind the horse. You do not know unless all these commissions and boards that sit in Sturbridge, if we tell you what they think, what they found. You're going to zone a piece of property with no knowledge, no knowledge hardly, of what's there. Have you walked it? No. Have you been invited to walk it? I wouldn't know that. And whether the boards and commissions have a chance to walk that. How would they even make decisions unless they know what's there? Because the major thing is going through that property. And I know that Jeanne Boban smiled the other night, told her, "Ah, the tour we're going to take. Would you like to straddle the Quinnipah River?" They do not still have me, they said, "Well, having that case is me." Jeanne did straddle the Quinnipah River. I threw it back to the man from Mash田. He's right, but you folks don't know it. What is the source of the Quinnipah River? Where is it? It's in Sturbridge. Eighteen ninety-nine map of Sturbridge, where homes, farmers' people's homes are on the map by name. That's how old it is. The north end of Leadmine Pond, and I left the map, the, it says right on it, source of Quinnipah River. And it is. At the north end of Leadmine Pond, there's a brook that can zone. Yeah, it's narrow. The Mississippi River starts off as a brook in northern Minnesota, where it's now developed by the town that's in New Orleans. The Quinnipah River starts as a brook at the north end of Leadmine Pond, comes through the pond, picks up a little more water. It leaves according maps and Google Earth, if you don't believe me, and it'll tell you that it's Leadmine Brook coming out of Leadmine Pond. Breaks down, going through the property we're talking about, it's going down there as Leadmine Brook. It empties into good old pond on there Mash田. It picks up the water from Mash田, as that gentleman spoke, and it picks up a lot of steam and gets to home pond. Now it becomes wide as a river. Everybody thinks that's the source. It's not. It's on our property, it's in Leadmine, it's on their property. And they probably don't know about it either. I think they're in a hurry to get this passed. I understand they've been there before with these plans and they've come to Sturbridge. And I think it owes you, listen to your boards, listen to your commissions, find out what they found out, what they need, what they desire. Now come, once you're informed, come before the town in Sturbridge, before you zone that property. If you zone it, if you approve of the property and approve the zoning, somebody else can say, "Oh, boy, you know, my boys want to have a big facility in Odom." They're going to have a right to it. If you zone this property, you can't spot zones, they only, that property can do all these things. So I think you really need to be informed is exactly what every one of your boards and commissions regarding to you have in mind. Because you may say, "We didn't know that. I don't think we would approve, bringing it to the voters." This is... Thank you.
Thank you, boss. Thank you. Boss, give me that, give me that river to try seeing. And actually, the board has and will take site visits at appropriate times if the project ever will follow. We've had him over a pilot this year, but thank you very much.
Gentlemen, ladies. Ted Goodman, Nike and Orchard Road. I just wanted to make one point perfectly clear, that Conservation Commission has not been on this site. We sent them a letter and asked it to go on the site, and we've been banned from the site. I think it's a very serious step to move forward without taking a look at that site. There are reports that burnable pools, you know, can't believe anything you hear from the reports. But you've got streams going two ways, you've got two ponds, and you're talking about fields. How about fields next to your house in Sturbridge? Fields is not easy. So I really think you should go back to whatever it said and put an asterisk on this thing, that frankly says, if it's not off the eighty-four, it's not a project. And let them go with it. And make the challenge, you both said that, "No, no, you can't do that." Well, you can if you really care about Sturbridge. So I think you ought to really consider.
Karen Davis, five hundred Main Street. I'm also the attorney for the opponent. And I just wanted to clarify this issue because this has come up multiple times in public hearings. We have reached out to the Conservation Commission, they did send us a letter, we responded appropriately, we have set up meetings with them, we had to file our hand draft, which happened today at noon. I don't appreciate being told that we're banning Khan Khan from the site because that's not accurate. We're following their procedures with Khan Khan. Thank you.
Peter Z, forty-two Old Farmer. Couple of things. First off, this project, or one very similar to it, has been proposed in several other towns, small towns in Massachusetts, has been turned down. I think the projects we had proposed by some of the city people dealing with here. In regards to this document, the first question is, I don't see the word alcohol anywhere in this. On page two, section B, in F and G, they talk about concession stands including walk-up establishments, eating and drinking establishments. Do the drinking establishment define alcohol sales?
Yes, with the appropriate permits to the board of selectmen, the alcohol beverage commission.
Okay, so that's not an issue there. How about for fairs and festivals? Again, they want to serve alcohol?
I believe that would be maybe a one-day permit if the board is wanting...
Okay, but that, we don't need to build that specific language in this. It'd be a shame if all we can do is, you know, Chuck E. Cheese for four-year-olds.
No, that's a separate permitting process. The same should be perhaps a food permit from the board of health, so...
All right. And then my other question is, and this is a serious question, is there any language in here? I mean, this thing's going to be partially for old horses that can't race anymore, where old horses die. You know, what happens when they die? Do they need dairy on this property? Do they get shipped off to a dog food factory? Should we have some, you know, language in here that says they can or can't, you know, use this as a cemetery for old horses?
I think I'm following in the board of health regulations for disposal of...
And has this done before the board of health yet, this project?
I think that they've had a meeting, but obviously, it's, actually, it's not a project yet. It's a proposal that may become a project if the voters decide they'd like to approve the zoning. So there will be many permitting processes that the applicants need to go through.
All right. Well, one of the other speakers was, you know, would feel a lot better if there was certain language in here. You know, I'd like to see it say they can't be buried here and they have to be hauled somewhere else. As I said, I think that's enough horse to know where with this project, they're ready. You know, the more... Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, okay.
I have a few questions about this, you know, some have been brought up to some extent, but one, I would echo the thought that sixty percent impervious is far too great for an equestrian agricultural center. There's no need for it, and if you're just excluding wetlands from that, you'll end up with impervious service right up to a wetland that's completely absurd. Another, and maybe the applicant could say whether they're even envisioning anything close to sixty percent, doesn't look like it from the plan, so, you know, we talked about how, we don't have an applicant yet, but we know what this project's for, what the zoning is for. So we're obviously considering that in all of this language, so we might as well limit that. It's not just any commercial site, it's a site that's, you know, almost half wetlands. Otherwise, you know, the town planner may have mentioned, "Oh, we don't want this to just be a cover for sports betting." But we all know that it is, that's what's making the money. And I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but I don't understand why the zoning language requires six races a year. If that's probably the most controversial aspect of this program, why? You know, and if, what would happen if horse racing is outlawed? Then what happens to the rest of this site? If the zoning bylaw requires racing, then everything else is null and void and they have to demolish everything? I don't know if anyone has an answer to that, but I, you know, I can see the other language of what an equine center shall include, except for that racing doesn't make any sense. Otherwise, on one hand, we're deferring some details to the host community agreement language and saying, you know, the host community agreement is going to say that access has to be on eighty-four. The host community agreement is going to say that no more than ten race days a year. But then we're also saying, we could have any applicant care. This is the proponent bringing this board now, but we're zoning this for good. So we could have any applicant come with another plan. I know that there's some requirements about the suitability of the roads that are being accessed, but what if, what if they're denied access on the highway and their alternative is to rebuild breakneck roads so it's suitable? You know, there's other ways around this. And I know someone else brought up this point, but specifically, you can go on to the Federal Highway Administration website, and it specifically says that, that access is not allowed through rest areas to any other site. And that's like specifically prohibited. So I don't see how we can move forward saying that this is the proper site to zone for this sort of use that we know will require lots of cars if there's no feasible access. The access they propose from eighty-four is very unlikely, and the access over the landfill is not possible. So we have not seen one feasible access point that's not breakneck road. And that's something that everyone agrees we don't want. So unless this zoning language is really cleaned up to cover those issues, the number of races and the access, I don't see how this board can feel good about prohibited and how the town can move forward with this without a lot more detail. This is just two half-bakeds.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to respond to a couple of things that have come up that just are not accurate at all. First of all, there'll be no rest area, it'll be an interchange. That's not what the vision was being fulfilled. Second of all, we have never presented this project at any of the town, at the birth of community funding. So with that, I just want to say thank you to the board. Also, I'd like to thank everyone at eight a.m. for the input and certain programs that have to say, or they take it seriously, and that's a very important thing.
Okay, you want to comment? Is there one?
Albert Greer, fifty Arno Road, for the last fifty-three years. I've been coming to town with these providing little more than sixty years. I know it's not a nation job, so it's not any committee, commission, whatever. And I applaud Jeanne Boban for the work she has done. I was a supporter of Jeanne Boban way back when she was over in Tree River. But I think in this case, the planning board, as a board, is got the cart behind the horse. No, actually, it's supposed to be, ahead of the horse. It's had other stuff that's behind the horse. You do not know unless all these commissions and boards that sit in Sturbridge, if we tell you what they think, what they found. You're going to zone a piece of property with no knowledge, no knowledge hardly, of what's there. Have you walked it? No. Have you been invited to walk it? I wouldn't know that. And whether the boards and commissions have a chance to walk that. How would they even make decisions unless they know what's there? Because the major thing is going through that property. And I know that Jeanne Boban smiled the other night, told her, "Ah, the tour we're going to take. Would you like to straddle the Quinnipah River?" They do not still have me, they said, "Well, having that case is me." Jeanne did straddle the Quinnipah River. I threw it back to the man from Mash田. He's right, but you folks don't know it. What is the source of the Quinnipah River? Where is it? It's in Sturbridge. Eighteen ninety-nine map of Sturbridge, where a homes, farmers' people's homes are on the map by name. That's how old it is. The north end of Leadmine Pond, and I left the map, the, it says right on it, source of Quinnipah River. And it is. At the north end of Leadmine Pond, there's a brook that can zone. Yeah, it's narrow. The Mississippi River starts off as a brook in northern Minnesota, where it's now developed by the town that's in New Orleans. The Quinnipah River starts as a brook at the north end of Leadmine Pond, comes through the pond, picks up a little more water. It leaves according maps and Google Earth, if you don't believe me, and it'll tell you that it's Leadmine Brook coming out of Leadmine Pond. Breaks down, going through the property we're talking about, it's going down there as Leadmine Brook. It empties into good old pond on there Mash田. It picks up the water from Mash田, as that gentleman spoke, and it picks up a lot of steam and gets to home pond. Now it becomes wide as a river. Everybody thinks that's the source. It's not. It's on our property, it's in Leadmine, it's on their property. And they probably don't know about it either. I think they're in a hurry to get this passed. And I understand they've been there before with these plans and they've come to Sturbridge. And I think it owes you, listen to your boards, listen to your commissions, find out what they found out, what they need, what they desire. Now come, once you're informed, come before the town in Sturbridge, before you zone that property. If you zone it, if you approve of the property and approve the zoning, somebody else can say, "Oh, boy, you know, my boys want to have a big facility in Odom." They're going to have a right to it. If you zone this property, you can't spot zones, they only, that property can do all these things. So I think you really need to be informed is exactly what every one of your boards and commissions regarding to you have in mind. Because you may say, "We didn't know that. I don't think we would approve, bringing it to the voters." This is... Thank you.
Thank you, boss. Thank you. And actually, the board has and will take site visits at appropriate times if the project ever will follow. We've had him over a pilot this year, but thank you very much. Thank you.
Gentlemen, ladies. Ted Goodman, Nike and Orchard Road. I just wanted to make one point perfectly clear, that Conservation Commission has not been on this site. We sent them a letter and asked it to go on the site, and we've been banned from the site. I think it's a very serious step to move forward without taking a look at that site. There are reports that burnable pools, you know, can't believe anything you hear from the reports. But you've got streams going two ways, you've got two ponds, and you're talking about fields. How about the fields next to your house in Sturbridge? Fields is not easy. So I really think you should go back to whatever it said and put an asterisk on this thing, that frankly says, if it's not off the eighty-four, it's not a project. And let them go with it. And make the challenge, you both said that, "No, no, you can't do that." Well, you can if you really care about Sturbridge. So I think you ought to really consider.
Thank you. Thank you.
Karen Davis, five hundred Main Street. I'm also the attorney for the opponent. And I just wanted to clarify this issue because this has come up multiple times in public hearings. We have reached out to the Conservation Commission, they did send us a letter, we responded appropriately, we have set up meetings with them, we had to file our hand draft, which happened today at noon. I don't appreciate being told that we're banning Khan Khan from the site because that's not accurate. We're following their procedures with Khan Khan. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Peter Z, forty-two Old Farmer. Couple of things. First off, this project, or one very similar to it, has been proposed in several other towns, small towns in Massachusetts, has been turned down. I think the projects we had proposed by some of the city people dealing with here. In regards to this document, the first question is, I don't see the word alcohol anywhere in this. On page two, section B, in F and G, they talk about concession stands including walk-up establishments, eating and drinking establishments. Do the drinking establishment define alcohol sales?
Yes, with the appropriate permits to the board of selectmen, the alcohol beverage commission.
Okay, so that's not an issue there. How about for fairs and festivals? Again, they want to serve alcohol?
I believe that would be maybe a one-day permit if the board is wanting...
Okay, but that, we don't need to build that specific language in this. It'd be a shame if all we can do is, you know, Chuck E. Cheese for four-year-olds.
No, that's a separate permitting process. The same should be perhaps a food permit from the board of health, so...
All right. And then my other question is, and this is a serious question, is there any language in here? I mean, this thing's going to be partially for old horses that can't race anymore, where old horses die. You know, what happens when they die?
It empties into good old pond on there Mashpee. It picks up the water from Mashpee, is that gentleman's fault, and it picks up a lot of steam and gets to long pond. Now it becomes wide as a river. Everybody thinks that's the source. It's not. It's on our property, it's in Leadmine, it's on their property, and they probably don't know about it either. I think they're in a hurry to get this passed. I understand they've been there before with these plans, and they've come to Sturbridge. And I think it owes you, listen to your boards, listen to your commissions, find out what they found out, what they need, what they desire. Now come, once you're informed, come before the town of Sturbridge, before you zone that property. If you zone it, if you approve of the property and approve the zoning, somebody else can say, oh, boy, you know, I've always wanted to have a big facility in Odum. They're going to have a right to it. If you zone this property, you can't spot zones, they don't need that property, been through all these things. So I think you really need to be informed is exactly what everybody, your boards and commissions, reporting to you have in mind. Because you may say, we didn't know that. I don't think we would approve, bringing it to the voters. This gives us a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, boss. Thank you. And actually, the board has and will take site visits at the appropriate time if the project goes forward. We've had him over, pilot this year, but just. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, ladies, Ted Goodman, Nike and Orchard Road. I just wanted to make one point perfectly clear, that Conservation Commission has not been on this site. We sent them a letter and asked to go on the site, and we've been banned from the site. I think it's a very serious step to move forward without taking a look at that site. There are reports of burnable pools, you know, can't believe anything here with reports.